Good evening and welcome to the January 7th meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. We have a couple changes to the agenda. We're going to hear from the audience members after the elections this evening, which will be, should be, a short process. And we have a couple of changes that will amend as we go through the agenda. Rick, you want to review the agenda for us, please?
Certainly will. We do have some minutes, and the minutes, there's some amendments in the minutes that the board has included. We had incorrectly identified members of the board absent at the December work session. Members Sella and member Meyer were both in attendance. We have, in addition to our consent agenda under law firms, we're also adding the Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney Law Firm. But the agenda looks with the approval of the minutes, we'll have the election of our board officers and chair. We'll then have hearings from our audience. From there, we'll have the consent agenda item. We have a couple of discussion items that include board committee appointments and also the board taking a look at a change in the joint powers agreement for the West Metro Education Program, as well as some discussion on the upcoming school calendars for 2013-14 and 2014-15. That would pretty much conclude. We'll have some information time, but again, this is the organizational meeting of the school board, and so it really is a time of organization. The regular school board meeting is set for January 28th.
Thank you, Rick. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a special meeting on December 10th, and a regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
Moved.
So moved?
So moved and seconded to approve those two minutes. Regina?
I move, or I move to amend the minutes so that we correct the special minutes listing board members present to include members Randy Meyer and Kathy Sullen.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of amending the minutes as corrected, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been amended. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended for both the special and the regular meeting on December 10th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next up, our first action item this evening in our organizational meeting is the annual election of the board chair. Can I get a motion, please?
I move the election of Randy Meyer as board chair for the coming school year, or the coming year. Second?
So moved and seconded. Any additional nominations? A motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded to close nominations. All those in favor of selecting Randy Meyer as board chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you very much for the privilege to serve. Next up, we have our annual election of board officers. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved?
What is the motion?
We need to list the names.
Do you want to list? I move that we appoint or elect Adit Almag as the vice chair, myself as treasurer, although that sounds inappropriate to put myself as treasurer, and Regina Neville as clerk.
I second.
Moved and seconded. The additional board members are listed as assistant clerks. Any?
Pardon, assistant treasurer.
Assistant treasurer, Lenny. Sorry, Lenny. Any discussion? We have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of approving the officer slate as provided, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Congratulations to all you, and thank you all for your hard work. Next up, we have some members of the audience who'd like to speak this evening. First up is Michelle Langfels. Michelle? You're allowed three minutes. We welcome you and for taking the time to share.
We just need you to grab the microphone, Michelle. Great, thank you.
Hi, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I expected to be third up, so, but that's fine. I am here, oh, first of all, I'm Michelle Langfels. I have two students in the Edina Schools, a sixth grader at Valley View and a third grader at Normandale Elementary. And I would like to talk about the proposed calendar change, the change proposed to have schools start before Labor Day. And this is my thoughts, but I have been talking a lot with friends and neighbors and certainly feel that a lot of, there's a lot of agreement in what I am going to express today. While I realize that the number of days are not going to change, I just wanted to share some of my thoughts as to why I would like to see the school calendars stay with the start after Labor Day. Frequently in Edina, from the schools and so forth, there's a lot of information going out about stressing family time, and there's also been speakers in to the community talking about how important family time is and balance within families with all their activities and school responsibilities. While kids are in school in Edina, I think parents are really dedicated to making sure their children are successful in school and that they achieve, you know, good, high standards and so forth, and I think the community supports the schools very well. When school is out, I think that's the time for children, families to recharge, to spend more time together, have more time for extended family and their friends. Summer is, right now, seems like, for Minnesota, is such a short season, and we all try and pack in a lot in the summertime. And even though the time, again, would be the same, I feel like summer kind of gets going a little later, the weather gets warmer as the summer goes. Also, the sports in the community are geared to start at the beginning of summer, and they finally end kind of towards mid-August, and so that leaves a very short time for families to really have that family time without all the sports and the commitments. And another reason is the end of the summer is that last final summer weekend for those people who have cabins. For my family, it's a time for my extended family to have one more hurrah together. I know a lot of people spend time at the state fair during that last week. So there's a lot of events in summer that people wouldn't be able to attend if you changed that. And then lastly, the only, the only reason I found in the Q and A and the information that was sent out to me from Valley View and Normandale and so forth, was that the reason we were thinking, or you're proposing, no, not you, but the calendar board is proposing to change that was based on trying to get the children into school about a week earlier so they have more study time for standardized testing. And I think we all see that in Edina, we tend to do very well on our standardized testing. So as a parent, I don't feel like my children are getting, are not getting a good education. And as a parent, the tests are important to me, but it's not the most important thing, and I think overall their education is far more important and what they're getting out of from their teachers and their classes than the tests. So that was the only reason I saw for this change. It didn't seem like the best reason, in my opinion. So again, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Chris? Chris, am I sure of the pronunciation of your last name?
It's French. Ah, it's Raffetall.
Raffetall, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Chris Raffetall, and I was, I live here in Edina, of course, and I was actually born and raised here, went to Cornelia, had one of the best principals of its time with Bob Burnett. And my kids today go to Normandale. I have a one in Normandale and one that's moved on now to Valley View, so have a real vested interest in the community. And I, I agree with almost everything that was just, just said. I wanted to add a couple of comments. First of all, this, everything that the school board has done and the, and the teachers and the principals and our administrators is just phenomenal. This is absolutely one of the best school districts in the, in the state. And so it's, it's probably not often, I don't know if you get a lot of people here complaining or sharing opinions because everything is run so well, but when I did get the calendar this year, I, there were some things that jumped out at me that I wanted to make some comments on. Prior to receiving the calendar update, I've been of the feeling that the kids are, from the time they start in September to the time that they leave, and some day, some years it's been as late as, I think, June 9th or June 10th, that, that overall school year is longer than it used to be. And if it's not longer than it used to be, there has to be more days off than there used to be. I just cannot remember having a week at Thanksgiving, two days at Martin Luther King, two days at President's Holiday. And, you know, I have learned a lesson this year with my daughter going into middle school. I do see an opportunity for, for kids to get recharged over that. Middle school's been a huge wake-up for all of us, and so I can see some of the benefit of having these extra days off, but it's, it seems like it's a lot. It seems like it's more than it has been in the past. I'm in total agreement that starting prior to Labor Day, from a family standpoint, is, is kind of a bummer. We, we have a cabin, I know a lot of people that, whether they have a cabin or not, just enjoy that last weekend, whether it's at the state fair or other activities. It would just be nice that we didn't, with this new calendar, we did not disrupt now both summer holidays, in my opinion, both Labor Day and Memorial Day. Two items that I'll, I'll close with as far as recommendations or action items, if you will, is I, I know there was a calendar group that put this together. I'm not, I'm not, I was not able to understand or entirely gather, you know, who was on the committee, and I think it's important to have a diverse committee. I think it's important to have, obviously, teachers and administrators and board members, but to have parents who have both family, both parents working, have parents who like to travel during the school year, have parents who have cabins, have, have parents with different ages in schools. I just think, if that wasn't done, I think that's, that's a mistake. I think you need a diverse group making these decisions. And the other piece is, and I apologize upfront if I have missed this, but if there, this is a good opportunity to survey the entire community of, of parents on this topic. If that wasn't done, I would strongly encourage some sort of a survey monkey or, or something to that, to that degree. I'm a big proponent of the majority basically rule, so if the majority says, let's start before Labor Day, I, you know, I'm not going to fall on a sword for that. I, I would go with what the majority said, but I, if it hasn't been done, I would encourage you to think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Next up, we have Laurel.
Hello, my name is Laurel Fishbach, and I live here in Edina, quite close, just on Concord Terrace. I have one child. She's in third grade at Normandale Elementary. I am against starting school prior to Labor Day for the same reasons that both Michelle and Chris have stated. I started a petition, and within 12 hours, I got 100 signatures. Within 12 hours, 100 people said they do not want schools starting prior, prior to Labor Day. I think that is significant in 12 hours. I think that a survey monkey would be in everyone's best interest to find out what the majority is. Out of all of the people I know, two people have said that they would love for their children to be in school more days and prior to Labor Day. Two people. That's not very many people. With the information that was released, I am unclear, as are a lot of people, as to how commercial construction is the impetus for the start prior to Labor Day to secure the proper construction companies or workers to complete the projects you need done. I'm going to quote Susan Seiler, who is a mother of four with a variety of children in different ages and different schools in Edina. She and her husband are currently in the commercial construction project management. "I was a commercial construction project manager prior to our decision for me to stay home with our four children. While I was working, many of my projects were public schools. At no time was there ever an issue with securing proper construction services because the kids did not get out of school until mid-June. The project schedule was always and continues to be mandated by the clients. In this case, our public schools. I am disappointed by the board using this reason as a jumping-off point for shifting our calendars." So we need to make sure that if we are not going to abide by the state law, which is not to start school prior to Labor Day, we need to make sure it's for all the right reasons, and like Chris said, we need to make sure it's what the majority wants as well. If it's not what the majority wants, then let's all work together as a community to figure out how to get done the capital improvements that need to be done in the timeframe you want them done and in the dollar amount you want them done. You have an amazing resource of very, very powerful people in Edina. A lot of these people are presidents, vice presidents, and owners of companies that can make things happen in a snap of a finger and a click of a button with our internet technology. So I would utilize us, and if there's something you want done, please ask because we can help in a variety of ways. I have my petition here that I've printed. I've also emailed it. The signatures are continuing to come in. I have only sent to you what came in as of 5:02 PM. Whether or not you want me to continue to send the updated PDFs, it's totally up to you, but there's quite an uproar of people who do not want schools starting prior to Labor Day. And I too agree with everything that Michelle and Chris have said this evening about family time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one additional request to speak tonight. Rob, welcome to come up.
Is that good?
Yep. Good to go.
Okay. My name is Rob Gooding, and I'm coming back from the last meeting. Sorry I'm late, I had to rush from basketball practice all the way in a different city. And thank you for letting me come in again, first and foremost. So I'm really here to find out what took place since the last time I came. I really didn't have any contact back from Edina Schools, other than one call from Second in Command and one email from First in Command. So I would like to know what was done in investigation involving, surrounding the bylaws from the Minnesota State High School League and your policies here at Edina Schools for gifted athletes that are middle schoolers to participate, and how that policy may or may not have been followed. I have no clue if anyone investigated the situation, and I'm here to receive some explanation or answers to what took place.
Rob, typically at a meeting, we don't have directly respond to questions. I know we are scheduled next meeting for a follow-up to the conclusion of the, of the study. Is that correct, Rick?
Yeah, I can just address briefly. It's, it is under investigation, and we have had, you know, the contact with, with you, Rob, and it's gonna, you know, we are still under investigation at this point, and as soon as we have closure on it, we'll make that contact back with you and your family.
Oh, please forgive me if I'm being rude here, but that was December 10th, and actually prior to December 10th, I've made several, I reached out several times to administration in this, regarding the situation, which should have been handled upon the first email. I got, I was given the runaround throughout the whole situation until I became a little bit more aggressive by showing up to a certain event and even coming here to the school board to pursue, in my opinion, the wrongdoing and disservice to student, student athlete. And upon, since that time that I was here last, my son was failing in Edina Schools amongst other students of color who are athletes. Now, on that note, those other students, students, athletes who are of color were given privileges to continue participating in athletics, and my son was not. And he was sacrificed, or however you want to call it, for, to keep a young player. And my son, at that particular time, was not failing. After that event, he started failing. So I'm going to be getting a little bit more aggressive in my actions towards Edina Schools. So I'm here to also let you know that this is the last time you'll see me solo. The next time I show up, I will have legal representation to deal with the school board and the Edina Schools and administrators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, in turn, my stu, my son's not a student in Edina Schools anymore, and he's placed at a school that's servicing him academically in a much better way than Edina did.
Next up on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any additional corrections to the consent agenda as presented, or items you like to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend consent item J, which references appointment of legal counsel. The, we have walked in a paper copy of the amended legal counsel list to appoint Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney, and then Rupp Anderson Squires and Walsberger Boering Law Firm and Dennis O'Brien Law Office. So I move that we amend as per the walked-in paper copy.
Second.
So moved and seconded to amend motion J to add an additional law firm. Any discussion? All those in favor of amending, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. The consent agenda has been amended. Any additional discussion or corrections or items you'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing that all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next item, we have personnel recommendations from Community Education Services. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the personnel recommendations from the Community Education Services. Any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations for Community Education Services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Next item is our normal personnel recommendations. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our personnel recommendations. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving personnel recommendations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. That's it for action items this evening. Next, we have several discussion items. First is the 2013 committee appointments, liaison and representatives. Normally, we approve these at the next second meeting in January. I think we want to keep the site reps the same, but there may be some shuffling of other positions. Is there any questions? Some, some of us have talked about this, I think I've talked to most of you as well about potential changes. Any additional committees, Rick, that are missing or ones we need to amend in any way?
No, I think the one we might want to consider, as far as a representative of, if we want to have a board member, we did not officially have one on communications. I mean, we moved that in in July, and that may be one. And then the other is, there may be some discussion whether we want to have a board member rep on our gifted and talented committee, just a thought. And so I think, want to make that decision probably prior to the January 28th meeting. This would go to, and it's the chair's appointment, it'll probably go through the HR process.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments around committee assignments?
This does not reflect what we have talked privately, so...
No, this is currently.
But, so is everybody on board, though, with, with the changes that were proposed?
So...
No? No, okay.
So there was...
We should probably discuss.
Yeah. Kathy would like to get involved with human resources, and Regina is willing to switch with her on, on teaching and learning. And so that would leave teaching and learning with Adit, Regina, and Lonnie, and would have HR with Adit, Randy, and Kathy. And then Lenny has an interest in going to board policy, and Kathy has offered to step aside from board policy. Anything I'm missing?
If you're going to add a board liaison to a gifted council, I would be willing to serve on that.
Okay.
And I'd be willing to be a backup if Lonnie couldn't make any of those meetings.
Lonnie would be...
Okay.
Would you want to be on the communication?
Yeah. And I think I've expressed interest in, like, in, interested in the communication board.
Okay. 287?
I can be a representative for 287.
Okay. Can WEMAP, Kathy, you want to hold tight there?
Uh, for, for a while, until we were, we've come up with a new strategic plan and we're dealing with some issues we'll talk about in one of the next discussion points, so I think probably just for continuity until some of those issues are resolved. It probably makes more sense than throwing somebody in who'd have to get up to speed.
Okay.
And on the State High School League, you're going to need to substitute a different staff person there.
Yeah, it still shows down.
Yeah. So that was in, that was, yeah.
Additional questions, comments, points?
When and if Kathy decides that she doesn't want to serve with WEMAP any longer, I'm willing to do that one.
Maybe do a handoff in the middle of the year.
Maybe you've got too many, maybe I should do the gifted for you while you do WEMAP.
You can be right after me. I won't wrestle you for it, Lenny.
Additional discussion or questions or comments?
Administrative will put a proposal out and let the board review it, see if we have all the, and then the board can have further feedback.
Okay.
Try to get that done before maybe the January 12th board retreat.
Are there any committees on here that are obsolete at this point? Is it, is it now Sarah?
No, I just attend.
Okay. Next. Joint Powers?
Go ahead, Kathy.
This is a proposal to amend the joint powers agreement between the 11 school districts that make up WEMAP to allow members to withdraw by providing six months' notice instead of the 18 months' notice that is currently in the joint powers agreement. That arose as part of the whole discussion with Minneapolis, and Minneapolis expressing an intent under the 18-month rule to withdraw, which they gave notice a year ago this January. And since then, we have been working on lots of issues with WEMAP, including doing a completely new strategic plan, looking at some finance issues, looking at some priority lottery issues and how students are chosen for the two arts magnet schools that WEMAP runs, plus looking at a variety of the other programs that WEMAP does to enhance and make WEMAP a better and stronger collaboration between those 11 districts. But one of the things that was important to Minneapolis was having a six-month withdrawal period, and so we have discussed that as a WEMAP board, and although, you know, in the best of all worlds, would we say that we would like it to be a six-month withdrawal rather than an 18-month withdrawal? Maybe not, but given that we think there is great value in the 11 school districts continuing to collaborate and cooperate together to discuss issues of integration and equity and run these two magnet schools, it is a way to continue moving forward. And it's not just any six months' notice, it would be six months before the end of a school year, so it would have to be given by the December prior that you would be withdrawing as of the end of the June school year. And then as a practical matter, because letting parents know and having it to be on your own home board that you'd be making a resolution to withdraw, it would actually probably occur, you'd, people would be aware of it prior to December. And as we have done strategic planning and as we have worked on strengthening our collaboration, the board has more of a mindset that if there were issues, that a particular board, would lead a particular board to say, we see no other recourse here but to withdraw from WEMAP, that that would be something that you would come to the WEMAP board way before a six-month, you know, final, here's, you know, this is the last thing I can do to say, here are some issues that I, that we need to work on as a group because we, as an individual district, have some issues, and that seeing the six-month notice as sort of the last step in an ongoing process, that then you would finally give your notice. So as I say, is it, in the best of all worlds, would we, would most districts probably prefer to keep it at 18 months, probably, but given how things have evolved and what we see the benefit of continuing to... But given how things have evolved and what we see the benefit of continuing to have a strong WMEP collaborative, the individual members who sit on WMEP are all going back to their home boards and recommending that they adopt it, so.
And administrative, I'd support that position, much like Kathy stated. It's, again, trying to work with Minneapolis that has evolving needs in the area of equity. And I think across the district, across their WMEP districts, there are evolving needs, and this allows some greater flexibility. I think there's also not an intent to have a gotcha, go on and someone do a change in a quick fashion. So I think there's open dialogue going on. So I think this is a process that would work. We would recommend administrative to take this for board action at the January 28th board meeting then.
Was there a discussion of any timeframe between 17 months and six months, like nine months? Or is that a discussion point? Or did Minneapolis pretty much come in and say, "We're looking at six"?
I think Minneapolis pretty much came in and said they were looking at six.
Do the other districts see any downside to this new system? Or is it just that it's more realistic because districts don't plan budgets and so forth in an 18-month kind of fashion, and so that that wasn't very realistic to begin with?
You know, and every district approaches this a little bit differently about how they think about it and how connected they are into WMEP. The original proposal that Minneapolis had was just to switch the agreement so Minneapolis had a six-month withdrawal and everybody else stayed at 18. I mean, they're saying, "We don't all have to do that, we just need that." And so, talking about that, every, the consensus was, "That makes no sense. Whatever we're doing, it's together as a collaborative." And we actually had some issues as to whether we could even change it just for one member. So it would have to be changed for all members, so.
So, what is the potential risk to our district if they actually gave six months' notice?
The risk to our district of who gave six months' notice? Minneapolis or any other, any other district? The, WMEP is a little bit different of an organization in that we're not on the hook, as I understand it financially, for any, anything other than the tuition that we send with the students that we send, that elect to go to the two fair schools every year. So we have about 42 students, I believe, this year that go to either the Fair School Crystal or the Fair School Downtown. And so we send the tuition payments to WMEP for those students. It's similar to if they were open enrolled in another school. And then we do send a portion, $19 per student in our district of our integration aid as well to WMEP that, that funds the professional development and other student programs that the, that the district runs.
But the risk then, if I'm understanding this correctly, if any of the schools in WMEP chose to exercise the six-month notice and to withdraw, the downside to all of the other participating districts is an increase in tuition? It's divided between fewer districts?
The, the risk would be whether those two magnet schools would continue to be viable without, it would, it would probably depend upon which district pulls...
There'd need to be a balance.
Right. And it would depend upon which district is giving a six-month notice. A district that has 42 students saying, "We won't send our 42 students there next year," is very different than a district who says, "We won't send our 400 students there next year."
Correct.
And that also assumes that a district who would do that would say to all their families, "You may not go to that, those magnet schools the following year," where it very well may be that a school district would work out a program that it would, you'd grandfather in the students that were already in the program and just not let new students enroll. I mean...
But those are unknowns.
Those are all unknowns.
And so there is a risk...
Because we've never had in, right, we've never had anyone withdraw, right.
But there is a risk really to all of the participating districts, to all of those families, because if a school with a large number of students enrolled chose to withdraw, that would impact all of the participating districts who would fairly need the notice as much as the participating district.
It would, it would depend upon, you'd have to look to see how you could run those two magnet schools with the students you would have left.
Right.
Right. And then there's all the other programs that WMEP runs as well. And, but as we sit right now, if we do not do this, Minneapolis says they will not stay. So, there are many unknowns if we do it, but there is one pretty clear known if we don't do it, so.
And are they the largest participating district at present?
Yes, they are. So, why we said that it was not the best solution, but given it all...
Understood, yeah.
Given where we stand.
Additional discussion?
Thank you for all of your time.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah. This is, that's a lot of time.
Next up, school calendar.
Just to, again, play back a little bit, the school calendar's been an item that, as a school district, we've talked about changing and trying to get more flexibility when we could start the school year. We've testified down to legislature, just saying, again, trying to get our independence so we had some choice around it. So we've had discussions this summer at board level. September, at a board level, we established parameters, say that we wanted to pursue that as an area of option. In October, we did share with the public to let them know that we're looking, again, just to say, "This is what we're looking to." November, the faculty voted on the options based on the input that a calendar committee, which had parents and staff and administrators involved in the discussions. And then we brought it to discussion at the board meeting in December. At that time, we also didn't want to seek feedback from the community, which we have been doing that since that December 10th school board meeting. We have received quite a bit of feedback from the community. I'll let Gwen hit some details on that. But where we are right now is administrative. We just felt like we needed to have the board give us more direction. The next step, again, following our governance model, would be that the HR committee, based on this discussion, would help the administration develop a recommendation, and the action would be taking place at the January 28th school board meeting. But Gwen and Susan, maybe you want to update the board on just some of the findings or... Susan in her best voice possible, given she's got the flu going on here.
This is my strong voice today. Yes, as Dr. Dresden mentioned, you know, we have received quite a few communications. Obviously, as school board members, we've been trying to kind of put them all together so if one member gets them, so that everybody is seeing all of the messages. And since that December 10th meeting, just a little bit on what the outgoing communications have been and then a little bit on what we have received back. As far as the outgoing communications, we sent out a news alert right after that board meeting on December 12th, and that went out electronically to staff and families. We posted that on the website, as well as the frequently asked questions that were referenced earlier in the meeting. We did include numerous repeats of that message in our weekly e-newsletters to both staff and external audiences. And we also made sure that it was picked up both in the local, in our local media outlets, the Sun Current and the Edina Patch. As far as incoming communications, as far as, in addition to numerous calls that were fielded by either district administration or board members, we received 75 responses via email or letter. That was as of about 5:00 this afternoon. They continue to come in. Just a quick summary of the responses, pretty similar to what you have heard tonight from the individuals who spoke during the public forum. We predominantly have heard from parents, and that predominant message is, "Please don't start before Labor Day." Citing hardship on parents and the working, the vacation schedules that a lot of people have, how it would coordinate with recreation, concern about whether or not there would be air conditioning in schools, about the heat if we started earlier in August. And then also just some questions about whether or not there was enough notice in, to start this, for this fall. Some alternatives have been suggested. Some people have cited them already this evening, but just in general, most of the comments were either perhaps keep that winter break at about a week and a half like we had just completed, or shortening up that whole week break at Thanksgiving while staff work those days. Students are off that whole week. As far as the early release light starts, there haven't been a lot of incoming messages about that. Just a few have expressed concern, about five or six have expressed concerns about that, mostly related to childcare concerns and how would that be accommodated. There have been several, about five or six people also citing the concern about the, using the statutory allowance for us to start due to our construction, but wondering if that's really in the spirit of the law. And then there's a continued concern on how much emphasis we might be placing on standardized tests, and is that the focus of it? And then in general, I think there's been a lot of people just kind of questioning about, what exactly did that staff vote mean? We heard from some of our staff about that as well, wondering what the representation on that committee was and how were they, how were the staff selected for that, as well as parents, again, saying, you know, "Is there some way we could get some parent feedback about that?" So that's just kind of a summary of the responses that we've heard so far.
I'd also say that some of the suggestions that I've, that we've received is to, to... I'll move closer. Some of the suggestions that we've received from some of our communication, from community members, would be that if we are heading in this direction of starting before Labor Day, that we would hold off for another year to the year 2014, 15. So that would give parents enough time to have some more forewarning as opposed to a six- or an eight-month window period like we're doing at this point.
Were all of the calendars that were presented from the calendar committee before Labor Day starts?
Yes.
Yes, they were. That was the direction we were given.
That, that was, you know, I, we do, we do get a lot of feedback from the community, and we appreciate the feedback. I think some of the things people are not aware of, you know, and to me, one of the big reasons that I supported beyond the fact that there is the construction reason is what happens in the high school at the end of the year, which is a problem that I think a lot of people may not be aware of. But basically, after the two, first week of May when the AP tests are over, it's, it's a problem that the high school struggled with and has been struggling with. And, you know, they came, there was a committee at the high school trying to figure it out, and they haven't been able to figure it out. And we basically have four weeks where there is instruction, but there is a lot of lost time in that period. We do have offer May term for seniors, but not all of them take advantage of it. And we don't just have seniors that are dealing with this end-of-the-year issue. So to me, the best advantage of the early start is the fact that we are having a better use of academic time. To me, being on a school board is about the best, giving our students the best education. I've sat on calendar committee where I did not, my family, did not suit me that the way it worked for my own family vacation. But, you know, I understood that that is not the most important consideration in setting up calendars. So, you know, if it came to, if it comes to a vote, I will support the early start because of the reasons that I've just mentioned.
So, a number of the people have suggested shortening the Thanksgiving break. I see we have in-service days. What happens during that week of Thanksgiving from the teacher's perspective?
From the teacher's perspective is that we have, we continue to have parent-teacher conferences. And we, because we have some the prior week in the evenings, but then we have conferences during the day. And then we have one and a half to two days of in-service. And so there's professional learning communities, there are in-services at each of the buildings. And then we have to compensate the teachers for the time, for the two evenings that they held conferences during the month of November, or sometimes in the month of October. They have, they have one day off. So that's what happens with those three days during, during Thanksgiving week.
So if we had school for those three days, then we'd have to figure out ways of working out the schedule for in-service days and comp days otherwise, right?
In-service, comp days and conferences, yes.
And didn't the high school used to have a short Thanksgiving break?
Yeah, some years ago, they had, but, you know, generally, I think one of the parameters from sitting way back on calendar committees, that nobody likes a week where you have two days of instruction in that week. That's usually a time that families will take off, as I think a lot of families actually did in this shortened Christmas vacation. Some family didn't come back for the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Next year, it would be just Thursday, Friday, which would really be a very uncomfortable situation. So I think that one of the parameter was not, try not to have any weeks with two, only two instruction days.
Well, the other, I think, and the other parameter was to match up elementary, middle, and high school so that you did, if you had students at the different levels, they all had the same days off. Because it used to be that the elementary and the middle schools did have the week of Thanksgiving, and the high school went through Tuesdays. Sometimes they went through Wednesday, sometimes they went through Tuesday, depending on what year it was. So that was an alignment so that for a family, you, you weren't having just one child in school and the others having off.
The high school administration has, for years, said, "Can't you do something about starting school earlier?" We get two weeks or three weeks less than schools in Arizona and in California or wherever they are who start mid-August to prepare our students for the AP test.
Not, not just students in Arizona, Black, that, Black Lake, Benild, Holy Angels, Visitation, St. Thomas, any of the private schools that, here in the metropolitan area, they all start before Labor Day. Absolutely everyone.
Yeah. And the AP test, to me, is a brand. This is what we are trying to promote in Edina. This is, this is the, this is one of the things that attract our families to Edina. And we have high school graduates who go to college as sophomores or juniors because they're able to get the fours, fives in the AP tests and are able to then save themselves some years of college tuition. And so, you know, to me, this, this is the major consideration, even though I understand that it is not very appealing to some people with that, with the state fair in the last week of August.
I guess my concern is, you know, we have heard from a, a major portion of our constituents who, you know, are not in favor of this new recommendation. And we are, you know, fighting upstream, in my opinion, when it is a state law. This law was created in the mid-'80s. For whatever reasons it was created, it is the law as it stands. Now, that doesn't apply to private schools, but applies to public schools. And we have found a way to work around that for this particular proposal, but I question, I guess, how much time we're adding versus all of the time that we're, we take off and the length of the various vacations and such. And the balance, you know, I know this is good for the high school, but, you know, that's three years out of the 12. And my concern is that, you know, we need to, I think there's other issues. We need the legislature and other bodies to be hearing that we are wanting more local control, but to go around what is the law for the sake of this, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm in full agreement on that.
I have to admit that I thought about this mostly from the standpoint of the high school. As a former advanced placement teacher, particularly in social studies, five extra days is huge. And...
You're not getting five.
Well, I hope, I don't know whether we are actually getting a full five. That would be one of my questions. I, I'm conflicted about this after having heard so much negative feedback from community members. And yes, it's a significant number of people, but we have 8,000 students. And, you know, do I say, "Well, if people haven't said anything, they agree with the people who've spoken"? Or that... Or that, that they're more like Adit who say, "This may not be what I want, but it, you know, if it's good for the district, then I'll live with it." I think that the sports piece of it, summer sports would have to come in line with the schools. I mean, they would start earlier and you would still get family time. It just wouldn't be right before Labor Day. And, and I'm watching the head shake and, and I, I understand where you're coming from. This is, this is a conundrum.
Are the AP tests, can they only be taken at a certain time?
Yes, yeah.
Are these nationally normed? Is this a national or a state?
Minnesota is an outlier nationally in that we have less instruction time. It is, we're bound by the national schedule. We don't have an opportunity to determine the testing dates.
Everybody takes AP US history on the same day everywhere in the United States.
Everywhere in the world.
It's, I appreciate the feedback from the community, and I've, I know I've read every email, every letter that's been received.
I think, we all have.
I think it's safe to say that this is true for the board. It's taken seriously and it's appreciated. The feedback was requested in December and that is an important part of the process. And I think it's also important to stress that the decision is not final. This is the opportunity that we have to reflect on the feedback and to take the time between now and the next meeting to determine what's the best course of action. I can speak for my own decision process in that I, I agree that it's conflicting. Having had children go through the system who are now in college, looking at the full thirteen-year experience, looking at, frequently for my family, we have children in just our spacing, three different sites, elementary, middle and high school. And I know that's not uncommon for a lot of Edina families. So I appreciate the request that was made to the calendar committee that whatever calendar is proposed must be consistent for pre-K through twelve. And I appreciate what Adit is commenting on with the high school in that its needs, and the needs of those students, it's not the high school needs, it's the student needs. The needs of our students who are in the high school level are not the same as the elementary level. And how do we reconcile those in terms of time? And I, that's part of what I feel my obligation as a board member is to look at what is the best for our kids, and it's all of our kids. Part of that is they need to have some consistency with their siblings, because as I think has been stated very clearly and eloquently for many families, family time is valuable. It is valuable with the academic time. You don't want to rank those. Sports are different. The, the, you know, sports are important, extracurricular activities are important, and those schedules have some opportunities for adjustment. Family time, every family is different, but whenever you have that, that golden week or that golden couple of days where everything aligns, it's hard to come by. We don't necessarily have a lot of opportunities. It was clear to me from the correspondence that everyone's best fit was quite different between wanting shorter Thanksgiving, longer Thanksgiving, shorter winter break, et cetera. They were, they were not the same. So I know that whatever decision we make, it will not serve every family, and that's, that's a, a difficulty. But the driving force, I think, is what's best for our students and the families who support them. And how do we support that learning process and the families who are with them?
Additional discussion, the next steps?
Couple of quick comments. I mean, I'd like to see some more time before the AP exams. I'm a little concerned that this schedule ends up with one extra day of instruction, and maybe that's offset by the fact that there's extra teacher time in there, maybe that helps prepare. I mean, I would prefer a schedule that got more days in the classroom for the kids prior to the AP. And I'm also a little concerned that if the schedule was out in September and October, if people have made plans for next year, that maybe we need to take a look at instituting this, not this coming year, but the year after.
I agree.
That would be-
Yeah, I agree with that comment, that it's important to have as much advanced planning notice. We have some history in printing two calendars at a time for that very reason, two years at a time, and I think to honor that is, is fair and helpful to the community.
Additional comments, questions? Rick?
So we'll take this information. There will be a HR committee meeting that will, again, continue to give the administration more direction, and then we will bring a recommendation to the school board at the January twenty-eighth board meeting. We will also continue to keep the community informed of information that's being gathered. And I think this has been a helpful discussion for us administratively, and we do need to act on the January twenty-eighth, so we will have a recommendation ready for action prior to that.
Thank you. Any other additional comments or questions regarding calendar? Thank you all. So a few informational items, any other announcements or additional items?
Just to update the board on, posted our, kind of our two thousand thirteen legislative priorities as a district that we've been championing. One is around educational funding. This is, again, been a priority of our district for a long time. Again, being able to plan for our funding beyond the short term, the whole thought of being independent as a school district and so that, to free us from some of the regulations, allow us to increase our innovation, the quality workforce. We continue to support the work on making sure we standardize performance reviews and evaluations, and we're very engaged in that to make sure that it is quality versus mandates. We continue to embrace and encourage partnerships, educational partnerships, and would encourage the, so when we're talking about this, we are looking for innovative partnerships that encourage funding support for it. And finally, the last thing that we continue to support is that the state create a 2020 vision for education. It's very difficult, I think, from our view as a school district, to really try to plan financially, programmatically, everything from how we use technology when we're looking at three hundred school districts. And if we had a common vision, I think that would be helpful and something that we have supported and that we'll continue to champion with our local legislators as well as down in St. Paul. We're looking forward to the session. We've been in touch with our local legislators already and will continue to, to work with them, as well as the entire legislature and our lobbying groups, to make sure our young people in Edina are well-served as well as young people throughout the state. Finally, I just, again, as far as the public comments that were made at the December board meeting, we will do follow-up to those at the regular January twenty-eighth meeting, and we'll keep the board, as well as the constituents who've presented tonight, as well as at the December tenth meeting, informed of how our process is evolving.
Thank you, Rick. Any other additional items or committee reports or comments? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.[1636.78]